We're going to go ahead and call to order the Central Board of Education meeting for Monday, February 28th, 2022. Ms. Aubrey, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dunbar.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Mr. Sparker.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here, exactly, play on time. Please stand for the flag.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please get a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented?
Is that moved?
Second.
Oh, Ms. Aubrey, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunbar.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Mr. Sparker.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Tonight, we're going to start with honors, and we'll begin with Teacher of the Year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mrs. Sparks. We have two very special presentations tonight. The first one will be facilitated by Mr. Dan Harvey, our Director of Human Resources, and he'll talk to you a little bit about the Teacher of the Year program and be introducing Central City Schools nominee. And then that would be followed by, again, another very special presentation by Meredith Florkey in regards to the nature program that she is in charge of at Primary Village York. So Dan, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, and good evening. Each year, the district participates in the Ohio Teacher of the Year program, which is sponsored by the Ohio Department of Education. The mission of the Ohio Teacher of the Year program is to honor, promote, and recognize excellence in teaching and the teaching profession. This year, the district nominee was selected from Driscoll Elementary School, and I am very pleased to announce that the district has selected Mrs. Jackie Wallmer for this very special recognition. Meredith, and her first floor denominator, Ms. Erin Booker, come to the podium, please. Jackie is a special education teacher at Driscoll, of course, and has worked for the Central City Schools for the past 15 years in various capacities: parapro, a long-term sub, and now, of course, in the role of special education teacher. She's a proud graduate of Miami University. She's been teaching special education for the past 13 years. Her nominator is Driscoll Principal, Ms. Erin Booker, and Ms. Booker will be making a couple comments about Jackie here in a few minutes. Before Ms. Booker makes her comments, our Community Relations Specialist, Mrs. Sarah Swan, has prepared an informational video, a video clip of both Jackie and Ms. Booker introducing themselves and sharing additional information about this process. So, Mr. Sherrell, if you could start our video, please.
I'm an intervention specialist at your school. I work with second through fifth graders who have disabilities. This is my 12th year teaching, and I've worked in Centerville my entire career. Before teaching, I worked as a paraprofessional at your school and for summer camps to the district. Growing up, my mom was a special education teacher, and I spent a lot of time interacting with her students. I enjoyed helping her students to engage in the community and coached young adults in Special Olympics. I got tremendous satisfaction seeing the joy on their faces when they accomplished a skill they had been working towards. The thing that motivates me is seeing my students' successes with their academics, life skills, and social communication. Achievements in these areas are reinforced by hearing from parents and other service providers who are reporting the progress that has been made. My goal as a teacher is to help my students to become as independent as possible. My students may be in elementary school, but I'm already thinking about and working on the skills they will need as members of the community in the future. We are truly blessed to have Mrs. Jackie Wallmer as part of our Driscoll family. She's a dedicated educator who is continually learning and growing to provide the absolute best for our students. Mrs. Wallmer has high expectations for her students. Regardless of the unique needs of her learners, she demands that they work hard to reach their fullest potential. Mrs. Wallmer creates partnerships with her families. She is the link between home and school for their medical needs, their behavioral needs, their social-emotional needs, their communication needs, and, of course, their academic needs. There are countless examples of how she goes above and beyond for her families. Mrs. Wallmer is also highly respected by her colleagues. She leads a talented group of paraprofessionals. She collaborates with numerous related service providers on a daily basis, and she also serves as a mentor for other intervention specialists, both officially and unofficially. Mrs. Wallmer is exceptional and very deserving of this honor. She truly makes a difference in the lives of those who are fortunate enough to cross her path.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Swan for putting together that video piece this evening and also to share with Board of Education and our community that the video clip will also be posted on the district website. A little bit more about Mrs. Wallmer. She's an outstanding and accomplished teacher that excels in her classroom with her special needs students in every aspect, every day. Most notably, she is simply a very caring person who genuinely respects and attends to each of her students in a very personalized and individualized manner. Mrs. Wallmer's primary goal is to help ensure her students are making forward progress and feel valued every day. She consistently demonstrates leadership and innovation in and outside of the school setting, and this communicates the significance of lifelong learning to her professional peers. Jackie stated to me, quote, "My passion for working with students with disabilities began early in my life. As a high school student, I coached Special Olympics speed skating and worked at various summer camps assisting children and young adults with disabilities. During my junior and senior year of high school, I was an early childhood education student at PBN and spent most of my time in special education classrooms. I knew as a junior I wanted to be an intervention specialist for the Central City Schools." It's an honor tonight to present this recognition to Mrs. Wallmer, and at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Booker to say a couple more comments.
If ever there was an educator deserving of this award, Centerville Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Jackie Wallmer is definitely it. We are so fortunate to have her as part of our Driscoll family, and it is such an honor to be able to share her with all of you today. It is often said that teaching is heart work. There is no doubt that it takes a tremendous amount of heart to be an exceptional educator, and there is no argument that Mrs. Wallmer loves her job with all of her heart. When thinking of Mrs. Wallmer as an educator, one of my favorite educational quotes comes to mind. Teachers have three loves: a love of learning, a love of learners, and the love of bringing the first two loves together. Mrs. Wallmer is a lifelong learner. We will do whatever it takes to ensure her students succeed and become as independent as possible. Congratulations, Jackie. Thank you for being you and for everything that you do for our students, our families, and our colleagues.
Thank you, Ms. Booker. Tonight, Mrs., our board president, Mrs. Sparks, would like to make the actual presentation of the award.
Thank you. I am so very honored and humbled. You often hear the saying, "It takes a village to raise a child." Well, since we're the elves, in my classroom, it takes a herd to support and educate a child. This honor is not just about me, but goes to the many people I work with daily and weekly in my classroom. When I started teaching 12 years ago, I learned from many of the people in my herd, and they have helped shape me to become the teacher I am today. I would like to thank the following people: my paraprofessionals in my classroom, Laura Dusso, Karen Lash, and Kathy Posy; the speech and language pathologist, Amory Small; the physical therapist, Julie Ervall and Bobby Moshon; the occupational therapist, Elizabeth Fabro; my teaching partners, Lauren Burgess, Amanda McCormick, and Jessica Sanders; the school nurses, Yvonne Franklin and Jamie Johnson; the school secretary, Kim Mishka; and my building principal, Karen Booker; the entire Driscoll staff and my past and present students for always pushing me to be the best teacher I can be. However, none of this would have been possible if it weren't for my first and biggest mentors, my mom and dad. At a young age, they instilled in me that an education and good work ethic was important. To my mom, thank you for always listening to my never-ending school stories and letting me bounce ideas off of you morning and night. You and your students were the reason I wanted to become a special education teacher. Finally, thank you to my family. Jeffrey, you are my biggest cheerleader and the glue that keeps me and our family together. Thank you for your patience, all those nights that I say, "I'll be leaving soon." Thank you for always saying yes to all of my crazy ideas and never saying no when I need to buy just one more thing for school. Ellie and Owen, thanks for showing your kindness by being willing to share your toys with my students and always telling me to have a good day in the morning. Thank you again to my herd for supporting me and my students daily. You are the ones who have helped shape me into the teacher I am today. Thank you.
Wow, I should just sit down after that. Great job. Thank you, Jackie. Jackie's credentials will be reviewed by the state selection panel, which will choose one individual to represent the Ohio Teacher of the Year. Jackie, just on behalf of the Board of Education, our administrative team, I'd like to thank you for all of your outstanding work. Again, congratulations, special recognition, and to wish you good luck at the state level competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. The next very special presentation, we'd like to invite Meredith Florkey up to the podium. Meredith leads the nature program at Primary Village York, and so we appreciate her being here tonight to talk a little about the great things that she's doing at PBN.
Thank you. I will take this. And my best to speak into a microphone. My usual habitat is filled with mud, lots of children, and maybe occasional animal. So, much different environment tonight. I want to continue with the theme of village and recognition, and tonight I would not be here if not for several people. And a little bit about me, I'm a class director at First School in Centerville and founder and director and leading teacher at Learning Tree Farm Nature Preschool, also involved in the community in several different ways. And this is how the principal at PBN, Ms. Klein, got attached to me. I want to give recognition to her leadership and also parent Mary Watchery, who had her children in my program at Learning Tree Farm, connected Mindy and I. So, thank you, Mary. What we began with was last summer, coming together. And here is Mary and her children helping in the garden. We were able to host five summer family learn-with-me events, which means we get to learn and talk with each other in classroom activity, and the parents actually were helping us weave at the same time, and we had a great time doing it. Also, at the same time, the gal who's up here with me today, Lindsay Roth, is another parent at PBN, and she and I connected in the nature-based world prior to my coming to PBN, and it just so happened that we realized that she was a parent at this school anyway. So, she has been walking alongside me on this whole journey. We came together with some goals, and you'll notice that these goals are tied in with the building goals at PBN and also the district goals. You don't have to read everything. You're here tonight. You're here to see the pictures. But I highlighted a couple of key words, like collaboration, connecting emotionally and in relationship with each other. After the years that we've had, children really needed to connect with other people who have some joy. And using data and research, which we will get to a little bit later, but really providing a connective tissue. As I pulled the teachers, over 30 teachers and volunteers that had been involved up to this point in the wonders of nature program, it was really like, we know this is valuable. We want to do this. We know how to do this, but we're just missing that connective tissue piece. The person to fill the bird feeders, the person to source the seeds, the person to write the grant for the equipment, and things like that. This is one of my favorite. I'm not going to commentate every single picture, but one of our first grade lessons was a very introductory, basic lesson, but one of the students noticed a dead bird on the ground. And so, that lesson then became the dead bird lesson. We scrapped everything else and completely pivoted because the children were, of course, very concerned, and we went through an entire month of problem solving, and they eventually found the reason why that bird had died, consulting experts and using non-viction. We also coordinated with local Eagle Scouts and PBN along Grayson Atkins, and have been coordinating with the Parks Department next door, and we've created two outdoor classrooms as well as access paths to the adjoining woods. We've also written grants to the Rotary and Optimists. We want to give them a huge shout-out for their support. We will show you what they bought in a little bit, as well as the education grant that was awarded last month. And here's some more pictures of those family events. You can see the kids are getting involved from the very beginning. And this will be, you have a vent at PBN. This is the outdoor nature spaces. At the back in the wooded area, you see a hide-in is the park next door that we found the gate to and have been accessing it all year. So, our first grade students, we have done lots of fun lessons. Here's Lindsay is leading the lesson. We made sure that she's had lots of exposure and opportunities to meet the children as well, learning about trees. Here's one of our community volunteers out. Pearl, who jumped right in and got on board, working one-on-one with the kids. And this was, something that was important. We have the ability to open the playground during outdoor recess, and so they can choose to come over and utilize the nature spaces so that it's not just getting utilized, you know, five or six times a year when there's a lesson. They actually get to explore and have open-ended time out there, exploring, using tools, investigating all the plants. And then here we are in the wooded spaces. We've worked on lessons such as creature teachers, which tell us about our senses, talking about trees and seeds. The ever-popular winter, getting ready for winter lesson with hibernation, rumination, migration, and adaptation, complete with dendops in the woods. And then animal tracking in this winter. So, you can see, we've been out in all kinds of weather, and parents have been very supportive. On the left, that's ice, and the kids are able to walk and experience that in a safe manner. This is where I refer back to the Rotary and Optimists. They funded a cart full of boots, ponchos, jerseys, mittens, hats, anything that we could possibly need. Parents have been great and very supportive, but sometimes families don't have the means to keep up with the shoe sizes or forget for a day. So, that is the integral part that we need to provide so that we don't have to stay in that. Tracking is super exciting. There's a lot of wild things happening just in our playground and in the woods back there. So, the kindergarten and preschool, the big thing that we've just finished up is maple tapping. We've tapped 10 trees in the back of the woods and have been actually making maple syrup with them. The Optimists took on a challenge. They wanted to donate more money to the Rotary, and so they funded these. But preschoolers are able to get out and not have to worry about getting hurt. Just preschool shots. We can sure there's some inclusion. All children are getting outside. Staff has been working very creatively with me to make sure that that happens. Things like watching the wheat cycle from beginning to end, planting wheat, harvesting wheat, grinding wheat and baking with it, and little red hen leaves with it. See some maple sap. So, the connective tissue, you know, we initiated conversation between all of the younger buildings. We've been training Lindsay right alongside with me the entire year. The UD Family Engagement students have been out for two semesters, working on the nature knife. And also, I wanted to thank the PTO, who is an integral in funding this position for this school year. Some of the fun, exciting things to start to wrap up is the way that we're handling the nature program this year is such that we can handle a dead bird. Things that happen in nature in real time are more important than, you know, the lesson that I thought was going to happen. We've had a mystery plant drawl series. A student came to me who, you know, has struggled in his classroom with a mystery seed pot, and he was able to go out with me and see that project to the end, boosting his self-esteem. And now he is one of the soil students that I've been working with, who come to me for a little bit of extra time in nature. There is some advanced soil study. We've had some animal visitors, maybe favorite live reptiles. But learning so far, collaboration and common goals are important. Budgeting and financial investment in this program have been key. Investing in people, talent, training is more important, I think, than actual materials sometimes. And, of course, you'll see on our next slide, penguins at PBN are hungry for this, and they've been very supportive and excited. Research shows that when children spend a lot of time out in nature repeatedly, produces a community committed to preserving natural resources, that improves social skills, and Lindsay's going to start to process some of this data that you can take a look at for anybody who's interested. I have one that's on the table. But we'll also be better positioned to fulfill future types of jobs in our community. This is the one I was talking about. We did a, the UD students did a family survey of 154 families that responded. Over 98% of them were positive about this program, and there's some quotes they leave in view as well. So, with that, I want to say thank you, and let's all go outside and play.
Thank you, Meredith, and thanks for doing such a great job in PBN.
She's being really modest. If you saw this program, it would blow you away the way that she's taking Steve Sanders, because I volunteered for using years in this program. And she took a great program and made it unbelievable. Go out there, go to PBN, go to the back of the player, look at how she's changed the park and worked with the park district. It's really amazing how she's given state standards into these lessons, and the kids are feeding it up. They are so excited to see her. Even with the boots, it takes forever getting dressed, but they are. It is worth every penny. She's amazing. Thank you so much for coming.
We're going to take just about a two-minute break and kind of reset the video camera. And for those of you in the audience, you're welcome to stay for the remainder of the exciting meeting that we have planned tonight. But if you want to exit gracefully, you can take advantage of a two-minute break, and we'll pick back up with our meeting in just a second.
So, the next is public participation. The Board of Education recognizes the value to school governance, of public comment, and educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community and trust. The presiding officer of each board meeting, I'm sorry, the presiding officer of each board meeting at the public participation is permit and shall, as Minister Kristof stated. When you enter the podium, please state your name. If you're a resident or not, you have three minutes after where would you keep time, please? Looks like we only have one speaker tonight. Would Mr. Whitehead please approach the podium?
Hello. My name is Kevin Whitehead, and I'm a resident of Central City. Did I say my address?
No, just say you're a resident.
Okay, yes, I'm a resident. So, my name is Kevin Whitehead, and I'm the vouchsorier for the senior class at CHS. I strongly believe that class rank needs to come back for future classes. I'm here because I am no longer a stakeholder. This doesn't matter to me personally. It matters to me ideologically. For many colleges, class rank carries an immense weight. Ivy League schools such as Harvard state that 95% of accepted students are in the top 10% of their class, and 47% are either vouchsorier or soliditorian. Top-tier schools are schools in which Centerville students are getting in at lower rates, and Centerville is falling in public school rankings. Without class rank, those numbers will go down even farther, as colleges cannot place where a student is in their class. And if half of the clientele are vouchs or sells, the non-ranked students have to fight for those remaining spots. Secondly, class rank does create a competitive environment regarding top students at Centerville. This is not necessarily a bad thing. Competition exists in every aspect of our lives. Student council elections were competitive, and I ended up losing president this year. I accepted it. I lost. In our band and orchestra, we rank people's chairs based on how well they are performing. Coach Cups can't take everyone on his basketball team. It forces those who want to be on the team to work hard and enhance their skills. The same should go for academics. The culture here does not fully back kids going to top schools. I have been told by administration that their main goal is to get a student into OSU. When a basketball or football player commits to a top school, they are applauded. When I discuss my future dreams, I'm often questioned for wanting to go to an Ivy League school and not OSU. The Career Expo Program, a program consisting of block standard classes that takes students away from AP classes, had a Career Expo Fair, and it was mandatory for every sophomore. However, the AP Fair is optional and requires a form from a teacher. Some of my peers went through their high school life without AP classes, and when their senior year hit, they were stunned they couldn't get into OSU 3A. It's simply a lack of guidance. Centerville should create a position that can help high-achieving students prepare for college applications. At Oakwood and schools up in the East Coast, counselors email colleges for students, build relationships, and assist students on their college process early on. We have six amazing counselors at Centerville, but they cater to nearly 500 students. There needs to be a counselor for students seeking the most prestigious schools, so it is less of a shot in the dark up against athletes, legacy, and people who donated $5 million for a building. Centerville excels musically and athletically. We do really well at getting students into UC and OSU. However, some students want more. I recommend a more active environment created by class rank, early college guidance in the form of counselors and resources, and a change in culture to a larger focus on the opportunities for higher-achieving students. I want to thank the board for their time, and thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is the board of state report. That's me, so I'll go ahead and go to it tonight. The Ohio Redistricting Commission voted to approve the state legislative district map by a vote of four to three. The approval, or the approved maps did not receive bipartisan support, which makes the approved maps only effective for four years. And that's the end of the report. Next on the agenda is the student board representative reports. Would you guys like to go ahead and move to the podium?
Good evening. My name is Jacob Bierman Jr. I just want to tell you a little bit about a meeting that Zoe and I went to. We go once a quarter to the County Education Center down in downtown. We meet there all day from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and we meet with a lot of different people. We've met with fellow profit leaders, people from charities and nonprofits across Dayton, as well as state legislators, to see what the issues are and then report to students. Our last meeting was last month, or this month, and we reviewed what we learned from last time with our state legislators, and then we also talked about U signs, which is going to, they've been experimenting with. So, we got to look into some stuff that they're experimenting with, with some schools, and then also gave our feedback on that to see if it would be something that we'd be interested in.
That works.
Hi, good evening. My name's Arushi Agarwal, and today I'd like to introduce my newest project as a board rep. I catered a student in sixth grade at Watts, and I was asking her how school was going, and she informed me about a cyberbullying issue going on throughout the middle schools. I went through middle school, and I understood what she's talking about, and I decided it was time to do something about it. So, I reached out to our counselors and principals at the middle schools, and I told them what was going on, and that I asked the other board reps and I if we could do something about it. And so, they all replied, and they were very enthusiastic about doing something. And so, I scheduled a meeting with the principal at Talon, and we went with him, and we discussed it, and we talked about setting up a time for it to meet with our student council to do something to spread kindness throughout the middle schools. So, we have something planned that we're going to dedicate one week, and all three middle schools do something that we intend to promote kindness. And while we do that, we're also going to educate them about cyberbullying, you know, what a digital footprint is, how it affects not only the student of cyberbullying, but to who they bully, and how, you know, it can lead to something much bigger. So, we have a couple upcoming meetings on the 7th and the 10th with our middle schools to see if we can install something. And then also, we are planning to do something with the high school, more related towards mentoring. mental health than bullying.
Can you get the email replaced?
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is the monthly financial report.
We're going to talk tonight, Mr. Westney and Mrs. Calhoun and I, we're going to talk a little bit about COVID relief funds that we have received in the district. So the purpose of all the COVID relief funds that we received is to prevent, to prepare for, and to respond to COVID-19. That's been the general theme with every, we've received several different grants, but that has been the general theme with each one of those. Today, we received allocations of almost $11 million over a five-year period of time. And so from the time COVID started here in March of 2020, we're going to go all the way through 2024 spending these funds, again, to prevent, to prepare for, and to respond to COVID-19. These are one-time funding sources that we've received from a couple of different grants, coronavirus relief funds, and then also a few different forms of what are called ESAR funds and ARP-ESAR as well. And then the other, the other fact that we put on is we decided, you know, how to use these funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to COVID-19, is that we wanted to make sure that we touched all the areas of our operations. And so Mr. Westney and Mrs. Calhoun are going to talk a little bit more about that.
Hello, good evening. So just a couple items. Really on this slide, I'm going to talk about personal protection equipment, things like masks, gloves, gowns, EVA nursing supplies that take care of our nurses at all the buildings. But also to expand on that, there's a lot of cleaning, paper towels, disinfecting items that we need for the buildings. All of our buildings now have disinfectant sprayers, Corox 360 machines that we use on a daily basis to clean, spray classrooms. We're going to quickly clean and spray those classrooms and disinfect those areas when we have outbreaks of different types of illnesses that may occur in those classrooms. We also use some of the money for our student nutrition services and transportation. You recall, with the shutdown, we were feeding a lot of our kids throughout the summertime, bringing in our staff in the summertime for our drivers and our food servers to prepare the food, and get the food out to the buildings, or make those deliveries for food bars for our students. And then obviously, some of the bigger projects that we've been able to do with air handling units, cleaning and disinfecting those units, adding MERV 13 filters at all those units in our buildings. We typically change the filters out three to four times a year for all of our units throughout all the buildings in the district. And then tonight, we'll also, I'm going to ask you to approve one of the project that we're in elementary, again, using ESAR funds to help support that project.
And then with curriculum, technology, instruction, assessment, we've really kind of spent money in that several different phases. The first phase was when we spent money initially to support remote learning. And so we were able to buy online subscriptions, we needed Wi-Fi hotspots, and then the fees to keep those going so families could be connected. We got one-to-one with our Chromebooks, we used that money to help with that. And then we purchased some individual supply, work kits, different things, math manipulator kits to help support that remote learning that was happening. We had pickups throughout that time. Then we moved into the blended learning phase, and so then we were continuing with Wi-Fi hotspots. We needed digital cameras in order to, for teachers to be teaching both in-person and remote students. We, again, supported with individual kits for that school year as well. And then we did compensate our teachers because they were doing all the planning and prep to make sure that they were teaching students both in-person and remote. And then in the phase that we're in now, that in-person learning and recovery, there have been some things we needed to support, including summer intervention. We've also used this money to help provide additional staff, so we have additional counselors at the high school, we added some math positions to help with recovery, as well as reduced class size in first grade in both buildings, and then some intervention specialists. We've also bought a variety of supplies that are supporting that learning recovery and making, helping students move forward as we continue to recover. So that's what we have, unless you have any questions for us this evening.
The next item is the treasurer's recommendations. Consider approving the January 2022 financial statements, the monthly general fund rolling report, the monthly cash reconciliation, the monthly fund activity report, then-and-out purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by the board resulting total $9,384.72. Monthly cash reconciliation, December 2021, correct.
To move. Target.
You should call the roll, please, Ms. Sauber. Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks? Yes. Consider approving the minutes of the following Board of Education meetings, January 24th, 2022 regular meeting, and the February 22nd, 2022 work session. The motion, please.
You got it. Second.
Call the roll, please, Ms. Sauber.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's recommendations. The superintendent recommends accepting resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status or the change of contract status for the certified personnel, certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries programmed and the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries programmed and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and D1 for the supplemental, supplemental contract of extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leaves of absence for the personnel listed on Schedule E for the reasons and on the dates given.
To move.
Second.
Can I, or call the roll, please, Ms. Sauber.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Consider approving the farm lease between Centerville City Schools and the Lucas Brother Farms for both Sheehan and Franklin's three properties.
To move. Second.
Connect, please, or can you please call the roll, Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Consider the following capital improvement project using ESAR funds business, a resolution, do you have to read all of that? A resolution approving the lowest and best bid for the fry and mechanical to replace tube heating boilers at Weller Elementary with Brian Flex unit boilers as outlined in the competitive bid specifications.
Second.
Can I have the roll called, please, Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Wait, 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 wait. Do we have comments?
Well, I just wanted to reiterate that that's coming from the last of the ESAR funds that are of ESAR, is that correct? So otherwise, it would have come from the current program.
Now, can I have the roll, please, Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Consider a resolution approving the following board policies as listed. Can I have a motion, please?
To move.
Second.
Oh, can you call the roll, please, Ms. Sauber?
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Consider authorizing continued membership of the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2022, 2023 school year.
To move.
Second.
Please call the roll, Ms. Sauber.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Consider approving a resolution appointing Harleen Sutton to the Open Centerville Washington Township trustee position effective February 28th, 2022 through December 31st, 2025.
To move.
Second.
Could you please call the roll?
Wait, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I'm going to take a second to just explain how that works.
Absolutely. So the Washington Centerville Public Library is one of 148 libraries in Ohio that was established as a school district library, and so therefore, due to the Ohio Vice Code, that really just simply means that Centerville City Schools is the library's taxing authority, and it also means that the school district must put issues on the ballot on behalf of the library, and it also has to approve resolutions like members that they want to include on the library trustee board. So this is just a formality, and it's really just part of the Ohio Vice Code that Centerville City Schools gets involved with the library. We love the library, but they do their own thing, and they are their own entity group, and we just do this because we're required by the Ohio Vice Code. The director of the libraries is back here in the audience, Liz Holt, so if you guys would have any other questions. But thank Liz for being here, and we're just doing our compliant legal job here tonight to approve Carlin Sutton as the next one of the trustees.
And just to read it, we have no oversight of how they spend their money.
That's correct.
What they do with their money.
That's correct.
This is all their own entity, and Mrs. Sutton's a great choice.
That's correct. That's definitely.
Hold the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes. Any final comments for the good of the order, the Board of Education?
I would, you guys are going to get sick of me, and the community's probably going to be sick of me saying this all the time, but I am extremely proud of all of our employees for their especially, they've worked really, really hard through the last two years of the pandemic, and I want everyone to know that I personally, and I'm sure the board appreciates you all very, very much.
Pursuant to Ohio Vice Code Section 121.22G1, I hereby move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment of a employee of the school district. No other action will be taken except to come out of the executive session to adjourn. End motion.
To move.
Second.
Could you please call the roll, hopefully for the last time.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Sternbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Mr. Schreuer?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.